United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, first on agendas usuals are public comments. Do you have public comments? Please move the podium and sit your name and where you from please. Do you have any public comments?
Lynn Chaplin, fifteen Main Road. Just wanted to get an update and find out if Gartley Dorsey had given any information on Christmas Eve yet, the flood remediation, has anybody heard anything from him?
Yeah.
Like an update of bid, you know?
Yeah.
Well, anything. I haven't heard anything at all.
Will Gartley, I spoke with him and he would like to come to the next select board meeting to address this issue.
Okay. Thank you.
So he'll be at the July seventh meeting.
Thank you.
Please, Chief Hallett? I know I'm long here too.
You're not.
But, real quick, so the local health officer position. I spoke to a lady, her name is Pamela Russo.
Yeah, we got a...
You got it?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Good, good, good. Yeah, so I currently hold the position and I just want you guys to know that if she's interested in it, she wants it.
She's talking about volunteer. She wrote, she realized this is a volunteer position.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, and she's well qualified.
Yeah, yeah, I can see that from there. We should, you know, put it on our next agenda. Whatever you want to do, or edit, you know, edit now.
Can we, did we do it in August? When we do our town meeting? Because that position was appointed. Vote is voted, we appointed.
We, we appointed, disappointed, yeah. Yeah.
So you're saying you'd like a relinquished that position?
Yes, if she's interested, and she's, like I said, she's well qualified for it, so if that's the case, and she wants to take it, none of the time.
What is that list line?
I don't know off the top of my head.
I don't know either.
There's only one house there.
Oh.
It doesn't even, I don't even know why it's called, I was leaning.
Yeah, all right, just curious, that's all. There's no meaning difference, I'm just curious, I don't know.
It's off in North Shore Drive, down by a station.
Oh, okay. All right.
Any other public comments? Okay, seeing none. Public comments closed. First item on our list is adjustments to the agenda, I think.
Yes, I have one adjustment regarding the debt, there's a deadline of the bid for the salt. Salt bid.
Okay, I'll make the motion that we add that article to our agenda at some point. I don't know when you want to do it, now, on the new business or what.
On the new business.
Okay.
I'll second that.
Okay, how do you vote, Linda?
Yes.
How do you vote, Pam?
Yes.
Yes, my vote yes will add it to the new business agenda. Is there anybody here to speak for new business, cemetery committee? You can put it in the end, someone's here to speak.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, it's just a matter of us looking at the paperwork and, you know, voting on it just for a moment.
Okay, next item on our, any other adjustments to the agenda? Nope, here none. Okay, approve the meeting minutes from our June 2nd, 2025 select board meeting. I have reviewed them and I don't, nothing sticks out to me.
All right, I'll make the motion that we accept the minutes of the meeting of June 2nd, 2025.
They vote, you know?
Yes.
They vote, Pam?
Yes.
They vote yes. Okay, next item in the senior reports. First report we have is from our assessor. So our assessor is going to say, that's the assessor who goes, "Update."
Updating.
On the town revaluation process.
You want to say it?
Oh, I'm, I'm right there. So, where we're at, letters, database and letter, you've got a land coffee, it's going to the printers and brewer, they will, it's in their pre queue, and as soon as they fit us in, they will be sending revalue letters out. So that process is the, is, it's not an endpoint, it's an intermediate stopping point. I want to make that really clear. It's a chance for property owners to recheck their property data. On those fourteen hundred plus parcels in town, there's a hundred and fifty data points in each one, or more. Are they all perfect? I certainly hope so. But reality does set in when dealing with humans. So that's where we're at. We want to make sure we've got two months now to double check everything. The process started last November with Joe going out and inspecting the properties and seeing what we could find and not find, all those kinds of things. I did a preliminary sales ratio study at that point, came out, state of Maine has done their audit for the last two years. We, on average, were at fifty-four percent, and we are at, two years ago, fifty-two percent. So if you use that simple math, everybody's value needs to double the amount that much, right? Yep.
Doesn't mean the tax is...
I've asked for it a few times. So, that's not the whole story though, that's running average, properties, so that's where we're at. If the budgets stay the same, the mill rate goes down by half. It's a simple math problem. But that's not going to be true for everybody across the board. Looking through the data, since last year, Royal Shore was running about forty-five percent of market on that, and South Shore was up thirty percent. Comparing the assessed values to the selling prices, they were about thirty percent. South Shore's going to take it home and check. Well, two ways to grab that. Non-water fronts were right around sixty percent, so they're the ones, they were closer, but they were, you know, waterfronts are pulling down everybody else. As near as I can tell, it's been about, it's been over twenty-five years since revaluation was done. I checked the state records and they go back to the early two thousands. There's no mention at all on our asset for when our revaluations have, not this confidence of kind of way. What went into the computer comes out in a statistical kind of program. I know it applies to me on occasion. And so every single property value in the buildings was reviewed individually after I adjusted and calibrated the system. Some properties, we found some gross undervaluations. As expected, we have appeal, we have no review, not at all. And so that's where we're at. As I said, this is an intermediary, intermediary stopping point, just to make sure that we've got as best we can do it. But come August fifteenth, these are the numbers we're going to go forward with. We want everything to be as right as possible. Nothing's been done for twenty years, we're not going to fix it in six months.
Okay.
But we're going to give it the best shot, we have to give it the best shot. So here we are. Joe is going to be here Monday, Thursday until end of August. We ask that if you get any calls, send them to Joe. Let's get the data right first, and then we'll double check the result after that. There's two things here. We're going to have property owners who come in and say, "You can't double my value when you're here." Yes, we can. There's no limitation to that at all. We want to make sure that what the value is for this year is reasonable to the market. Then we have a sold book in the other room, I ask if anybody has any concerns, check that first. It's stunning what the market has done.
Yes, we know.
Yeah, and, you know.
We're already correcting them.
It's, I've spoken to a broker on Friday, and we are both of the opinion, and our numbers sort of support that, from fifty-four percent to fifty-two percent. Tells me maybe things are starting to stabilize a little bit. I do not know if we're in a bubble because it's not three years from now. And if the market changes up or down in three years, we'll go from there. Waiting twenty-five plus years to do revaluations, I think is orders on a criminal.
So why did the letter say fifteen?
My better information is one.
Yeah, I think what, what happened was, there was a, it wasn't a revaluation like you're doing, there was an up, you know, they didn't hit the computer or percentage, a factor, right? So that's, that's how, because my value is certainly more than it was twenty years ago. So there was something done along those lines, but it wasn't a full-fledged what you're, you're doing.
So, last time you went was the fifteen, when I looked at the state statistics this morning, there was nothing listed, so that told me no revaluation was happening in the house that was.
And just to reiterate for the concerned people decision, basically the mill rate's going to be adjusted to meet our budget.
Correct.
Yeah.
So, tax assessors, tax, being an actual tax assessor, it takes about fifteen minutes to hear. We're, we're valuation.
Yeah.
You are the tax people, you vote at the budgets.
Right.
We divide it to, net budget divided by taxable valuation, it's already, we apply that naturally, it's, pretty straightforward. So that is the public check to manage. Those are the ten items. Joe used a very good word last week when we were reviewing this letter, and he called it collaboration. And I think that's a much better way than saying we're doing it. Values need to change. But we want to be part of this process with the taxpayers. And some are going to be disappointed, and some, the market is the market.
Right.
And, but if there's a mistake, we're going to fix it. We're not, you know, these numbers are...
How do you determine the stake?
Oh, did we put down three bathrooms and there's two? Did we put down one bathroom and there's four? That would be a mistake, a bad move of data. What I then, what I, when I reviewed all the values that come out of the system, I checked that against the sold book, and that they seemed to line up pretty good, and I was in the ballpark. Being, like I said, a statistical thing, it's imperfect, and always has been. The state valuation, their sales ratio study, discards some perfectly good sales because they just happen to be on the edges of the statistics. And I look, I do this much the same thing. So I'll finish up, if you have anything.
No, that's great.
You like some of my talk?
I have, I have one question.
Sure.
So I've heard about base lot values, like you own one acre three, you have a base lot valuation, how is that determined? Based on waterfront, inside, outside the loop, and how is that established?
Yep, all of those things. I looked at all the sales waterfront, non-waterfront, or land valuations. Waterfront is a little more complicated because there's not a lot of vacant waterfront land sales that aren't developed. So you're going to see a developed land value and an undeveloped land value first acre. We had, what was in the system before was kind of a mess. We had waterfront properties being assessed as non-waterfront and then factored up three hundred percent. We had non-waterfront properties, or waterfront properties being, non-waterfront being treated as waterfront, factored down in the computer system, so we went through, I went through and recoded all of the land in town. So that waterfront is waterfront, or non-waterfront is non-waterfront, commercial is partial, airport is airport, you're talking, there's all those kinds of things. So there's a base lot value, or vacant parcels tend to be developed site value. Waterfront is usually done by a land residual, because there's not a lot of sales. We treat the buildings non-waterfront, the waterfront buildings are treated the same as non-waterfront buildings, and then look at that sale price, and the difference is attributed to the land valuation. So it's set up, it's called land residual, it's open bounds. But there's, there's actually been some waterfront sales, properties that were sold, buildings torn down, which are not market, but there are a good test them for a few, few things out there.
So the idea of the valuation, the overall valuation land plus house, it would be what we would reasonably expect it to sell for on the open market?
I can't quite say it that way, but I hope it's close.
Yes.
It's exactly what we ran before. And that's based on what has occurred in the last eighteen months or so. But if it's the best we know, I do not know what the yield holds for interest rates or anything else. And more importantly, I'll finish up with this. If you've even glanced at the newspaper, I read newspapers.
Yes.
The federal government, the state government are doing some interesting things. And if, if it's true that FEMA evaporates, it's going to be left to the towns to fix things. There, there, I foresee an education special here. The federal government changes the education formula to the state, the state's going to change it to the school, and the school doesn't, isn't going to move the budget. That's going to lean on the taxpayers. And I, I don't have any answer for that. It's not my job, it's my job is the valuations. So I'm just forewarning, we have a reserve account for roads, might want to beef it up. There's things that can walk out.
I think that education funds are just coming to the state and the federal government, they're just not going to be administered at the federal level.
Yeah, I don't know.
That's not as scary as it sounds, I don't think.
Yeah, I don't know, so.
Yeah, I'd say. So you've got, because you've done this, you've got the numbers, you have the total valuation of the town, correct?
Yeah.
Can you, the letters are probably already written, correct?
Yep.
Okay. I was just wondering if you could, based on last year's budget, if you could say, okay, based on last, if everything stayed the same, because the school were not, obviously.
Yep.
But within reason, could you say, okay, if everything stayed the same as last year's budget, your mill rate would be X?
I would rather not.
Okay.
Yours will.
Yeah, all right.
I will be wrong, I think, and I've done it before.
Right, right.
I put an estimated tax, tax bills in the world a couple of years ago.
Right.
I guessed high and people freaked.
Yeah, yeah, that definitely...
If I guess low, why does it higher?
Yeah.
So the odds of being wrong are absolutely going to be bad, you know, it happens. So I don't do that.
Right.
Now, when we get to early August, because there may be a correction out there, I'll give you an example, whatever I found. There's going to be corrections out there about valuations, so it's going to change. We're, we're, we're here to make sure you're as honest as possible. So, in one circumstance, when we're checking the data, the end of this, the double wide bubble home had a value of seventy-eight million dollars because of a miscode in previous years. Those are the kinds of things I look for, and so I want to make sure that, I don't think any of that's passed on, that was an easy one to catch, but we want to make sure that what we thought is good. And the plan for that is, get this really good today, in three years, we'll revisit the values, we'll do interim updating, the, you know, three-year information from now, and that's better for taxpayers.
Right.
The weight and whack method is not acceptable to me. And the lines of towns I could do again. We've got the technology and the skills, this form people to do this kind of stuff. We should never expect taxpayers to double and triple values, but at some point, we got to start over.
Right.
I don't like that answer, because I've been at this for a while. But you gotta, you gotta fix it somewhere along the line. And that's what we're here for. It's get a reasonable value on the property as a whole.
Yeah, I know Rockwell has predicted, on average, it's going to be about seventy-eight percent bad.
Yeah.
I don't know what they're doing with the mill rate for the value.
Yeah.
I mean, that's pretty close to a hundred percent.
The towns where I do updates every two or three years, work with the numbers, we've got data right, keep refining it, there's an education component with taxpayers in there that we're, we're doing our best. And so if it was, assessing was perfect, you know, a perfect situation, there'd never be abatements and supplemental assessments. So, the law, laws says, you know, there was to be, but we're going to try and make sure that we've got that to a paramount. We need to be close to, as, as you were mentioning. We should be kind of close to what's going on. We are. Something may have slipped by, it's fourteen hundred parcels.
Of course, yeah, there's, yeah.
True. Okay, one more question, so completely, I get asked this, I don't have an answer. So apples for apples, houses are basically assessed the same, whether they're on the water or they're in the middle of the loop, based on their construction, but parcels change based on, how many different layers of these parcels do we have now, it says opera?
So we're going to have north shore, south shore, off water, there's a few places in between, we're going to massage a little bit, properties with views, have a little bit of a consideration, the market told me that, that's not what we're going to do. The properties, buildings are not the same. There's quality of construction, there's condition of construction, it's where they're located. I've seen a phenomenon in St. George years ago, where it had two exactly the same modular caves sell, and the one on the water sold on a liquid water, lane value, because the building, because of the building being located on the water, they want, they paid more. So even though they're exactly the same, they had a different valuation. So I always look towards that result, and does that result seem to make sense? Is the data right? And does that result make sense? We just want to make sure, this is what, you know, I don't believe in setting new, new values with the taxpayers, I think that's just a cheap shot, let's get it right, because right is possible before then.
Mm-hmm.
It solves that. And then, like Joe said, I love his word, it's been collaborative effort, I have thought of it that way, so I learn something from everybody all the time. And I should, this market change. So that's where we're at, send people to Joe, and he knows the best starting point. He's going to have his hands full, but he has seen this process before in other town. He'll be here earlier than I think he's going to be.
Way of body honor.
No, um, that's, that's the word collaborative. Because we need body honor both ways, and I've seen poor assessors go together. It's about making sure the data's right and valid.
Yeah, yeah, sure, that's what it is.
Sometimes.
Pretty hard to deny.
Yeah. I always tell people, it's easier someone else to be doing.
Maybe I'll...
Mine's good. So we're good, bullet, and so, bullet, bullet out. You know, we'll look towards maybe the first meeting in August, have like a preliminary kind of mill rate target kind of thing.
Right, yeah, because we should have just about everything together by then, because we have the warrant and the book and everything out, so we should kind of know where we stand.
Yep, let's know six or eight weeks out, we'll have everything solved by then.
Right, yeah.
I don't even know what the total valuation, I haven't looked.
Yeah.
I just spotted what I've been called to.
Well, yeah.
Just the simple math.
Exactly.
Fifty-two to a hundred percent, you get a call.
Around the corner for me, it was, we had it headed at six, half a million, it sold for one point six.
Oh, seeing the future, I had that kind of skill. It's amazing. I still, I still don't understand. And here's the measure, it's on.
That's more rad.
Your question, Bob, for the town? Yeah, we budgeted thirty thousand a year for the last three years, including the current year.
Yep.
To fund the valuation. Last time I checked, nothing had been put against that for this year.
That's true.
And twelve thousand or so had been put against the assessor for which there was no budget. So somebody needs to get with Catherine to fix how that's been accounted for.
Yeah, so you've appropriated for revaluation thirty thousand a year for three years. We've not taken a draw on that yet. And the yearly assessor's budget, I hope that's been voted against, but we're getting, we're getting a check from an invoice, so thank you.
Jim, are you going to, because I year ends in a couple of weeks, are you going to build this before the end of the year, or do we need to carry over some of that money?
Need to carry that. Might have it, just to not build the town at all until the job's done.
Okay.
We're not, we're not done.
Yeah, all right. So that, that's just one thing we've got to talk to Catherine about, you know, carrying over some stuff.
Yeah, we should probably, you know, going forward, probably set aside ten thousand a year for an update in three years.
Yeah.
Like I said, it's going to be a lot cheaper to do an update once.
Right.
That's the hard part, is going to be the data gathering.
Yeah, yeah, for sure.
And we're still doing that, we're still going to find some stuff out there. We were here last Friday, and visited two neighborhoods that both had us spinning around. Went out and figured it out and find it. That's all we can do.
Yeah, for sure.
That's what we're supposed to do. Good, Mr. Chairman.
Great, thank you. Thank you.
Mr. Bass is ready, I can tell.
I was listening to you on that.
You can ask us a while, we don't need to have a...
Catherine, would you like to give us a treasure report, please?
Nine short and sweet, go. We have prelim audit next week. So this week, we're working on going through all the accounts, going through the budget and everything is in place. We have year end also on the thirtieth. There's a lot in the next couple of weeks. I know that you wanted to maybe meet next week as well to go over...
Yeah, I just made, you know, interjecting that we need to figure out what we're going to carry over, and we need to figure out what, if we're going to move some budget money that was over spent, take some that was under spent, and we have to vote on that, and, you know, we're going to have to meet before you close the books. The auditor's going to be here next week, so perhaps next Wednesday and Thursday, we're going to have to meet and...
I'm out of town Thursday through Sunday, so...
Okay, we'll have to be Wednesday then, because we've got to make those decisions before they, before they close the book, and also we need to figure out what we're going to do with the overage of the opera, and we can take that from a couple of the gifts accounts that we had, the Kansas Fund, and, and I think it's Hope Lunker was the other one, Hope Lunker, there's money there, no restrictions on, you can win it, so we got to figure out which part of all that opera stuff that was over, you know, over spent, not over spent, but allocated, where we're going to take the difference from. So we should meet, you know, next week. The auditor's going to be here two days or just Tuesday?
I think it's Tuesday.
Okay.
I'll meet for two, but I send out the report even above.
Yeah.
By the end of the week, so that we will have, there's something to go off of before the year end, and then once we close the books, I'll send out the reports, that will be half the whole total of the year.
Right, and perhaps the auditor's can make some suggestions too, because there's some things that, you know, do we do it this way, should we carry it over, or should we lapse it and, and raise it again, you know, this money? I know we always carry over the road account, because we're always doing stuff in the summer after the year, fiscal year is over, so there's some things that, you know, we got to make some decisions, we have to go before we close the books, so.
Let me know what day we're speaking, guys. Do you want to say it's on?
Well, let's do it Wednesday, and they're going to be here Tuesday, and that, they can give some input to that.
Can you make it Wednesday?
The later the better, because that's, I fish on its calendar Monday, Wednesday, Friday, so this is what I'm doing, so we'll call it later the better on...
I mean, I can do, like...
I can do any, anytime.
So, I'm about four o'clock.
But Catherine, we need to meet with you, right? So, do we want to do four?
Yeah, I'm waiting on it.
We, you know, we should have some definite figures, you know, by, by then, the auditor's here on, on Tuesday, if I get a chance, I'll come over and, you know, probably with Rodney's already, set up that time, and just make sure that, you know, this is what we should be doing, so we can vote on it.
All right. Okay?
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on to old business. The first item on the old business is bids for the Community Resilience Partnership, Community Action Grant, the Fire Phone. Has a figure listed here, forty-four thousand, eight hundred and fifty-seven dollars. Would you like to speak for that?
That's the grant amount, he's going to do the rest.
Okay.
So, so the check should be on his way in.
Oh, okay.
We're waiting for the check, and he's working on how to spend it.
All right, so we got that amount to spend?
Yes.
What if we don't spend it all?
Give it back.
Oh, sure.
We'll spend it all.
Sounds about right.
There's outreach money in there.
Yeah, yeah, I'm good, we can spend it, I'm sure.
I figured we could.
You had sent us two estimates.
Yeah, so that, that's what we've got. I, I actually put it out to Obalock too, but he never responded, got anything back to me. So it's, it's basically between Wilson and JDI.
Okay.
So I have a question though.
Yeah.
Since we initially only talk about Wilson.
Yeah.
So, I'm just saying this from, I manage her work business. So I'm just saying this from, I manage her work business. It's generally frowned upon, to basically court one company and then reach out to others later, like that. It doesn't usually sit well with people. So I don't know if we need to fix this on a town level, where we just set, this is what we're gonna do when we have grant money and we're gonna solicit this.
I think you're correct. I think there needs to be a good, clear process that everybody in the town follows.
Right.
And that's how it should be. Road Commissioner, myself, like, everybody needs to follow the same process. You're gonna spend over X amount, then you have to have a bidding process, and this is what it is. And I think that's what we need to do, because, you know.
It sort of goes into, too, with like, I think it was in September, October, where I was like, we need to have a town contract when we hire someone. We should have a standard template contract that a company that we hire enters into. Yeah, that's my, that's my, that's my only question I get to this point.
I agree.
Sorry to interrupt you.
Yeah, no, I agree fully. I think, you know, we've got two, we've got two good contractors, I think. And I didn't, you know, just to explain, I didn't copy Wilson's scope of work and give it to somebody else. We made our own scope of work and gave it to both. Wilson's the higher price by a good amount. You know, approximately $10,000. So, I mean, my thought process is, I've met with both of them at the locations. Wilson had a plan. He, they knew exactly what they were gonna do. They could speak to it. They've shown that they can do it in other towns. If you look at the South Pomston ponds that they've done for the past couple of years, they're beautiful. That's exactly what I want. Jake was kind of like, eh, no big deal, we'll just do this and this. And, you know, I think he was clear on what we were asking for. But since how it was kind of thrown together a little bit, I'm worried that he'll get halfway through the project and say, oh, this has taken longer than I thought to do this or that, we need to do an extra, you know, whatever.
Were we clear in what we expected done?
Very.
Because I think that's, that is in our favor. Like, if we had said this is what needs to be done, then you can't come back and say, well, that wasn't my original schedule of work.
Yeah, yeah, we were crystal clear.
Yeah.
That's a good word, two numbers.
Yep, JDI was 25.9 for both ponds, and Wilson was 34.7.
So to read like the conditions, I noticed that JDI put in, you know, this is covered, anything Wilson is not covered, and that was not in Wilson.
Right.
They seem like more open, an open-ended agreement. So I don't know if that means that, you know, other things pop up within the job, they gotta cover for that price, or does that mean that there'll be a, like a rework order to, or will that's to complete the project and help the work takes? This seemed a little more vague than, I'm.
Yeah.
So.
Yeah.
I'd have to ask them if.
Yeah, I mean, Wilson, I mean, they put a lot of time into it. They, you know, I'm very confident that what, the number they gave us is what it's gonna be.
Did, has JDI done such work? They've done similar projects?
Yep, he said that he's actually, he's got someone on his staff that he reached out to while we were there that has done the pond and the village before.
So did we submit that they'd visit two different times, or how far apart?
About three months. The bid themselves, though, are only a month apart.
Yeah.
Yeah, definitely we wanna, you know, not have the perception that it's.
Yeah, I mean, I'm okay with going either way. I'm just saying there's pros and cons to vote. I mean, you know, JDI, obviously, he's a contractor in town, he's used to working with us, so is Wilson. You know, I mean, so I, there's, you know, I think, like I said, there's pros and cons to using both. JDI's got someone who's done the village before, so he kind of knows what to expect when it's out there.
So I'm sure they all went, looked at him.
Yeah, they did.
Know what the scope of it was.
Yep.
I don't know, we have, you know, I think it's, I think it's, the Wilson one probably is better. And we have the money to cover it, it's not like, you know, we don't use, you know, $20,000, they're gonna get it back. It seems to me that that would be the logical way to go. And that still leaves 10 grand to do something. What, if I'm there, what's the outreach that you would be doing?
So we would pay for development and content for his website and do some, some community activities on fire awareness, and, because we need to do that annually anyway. We can do our annual smoke detector update as part of this too. And we can pay for a mailing for all this stuff too, out of that money. We have, there's $2,700 of whatever we want to do with outreach money.
Okay, so you're limited to the outreach money, it isn't, whatever's left can be spent.
No, I got a budget item for that too.
I guess.
So it's any unused in the total needs to be returned.
I get that.
So if we don't, yeah, so if we don't use the money, we have to give it back.
So are we here tonight to like approve this bid process, I mean, to pick one issue down?
Ideally, yeah.
I think we should.
My only concern is, I think Wilson's a stout company that's done great work for us, the $10,000 of his tax money, the way you look at it, you're gonna get, you know, I just.
I was, honestly, I was surprised there was so much difference. I thought it would be a couple thousand dollars. But, I mean, $10,000, that's quite a bit of money.
Well, I'm with the motion there, that we go with the Wilson company for the cleaning out the fire ponds, but 34,700.
The motion made. To hire estimate for cleaning out the fire ponds.
We're done discussing.
Well, if you're not, if you're not, if you're not seconded, then the motion fails.
Okay, no more discussion?
So, yeah, I was not seconded, so we can discuss.
Okay.
Yeah, the motion's been seconded, so it's open for discussion, so that's.
Yeah, so I think, and, yeah, I'm not quite sure, it's tricky, like, we've, I think we obviously wanna keep relations with both of these companies on a good, good footing. And so that's, that's just my concern about the way this is all falling out. So, and I get that the grant money's there, we can use overage for community outreach, you know, whatever. So.
What were you thinking? Can I ask, is the community outreach factor number stay the same regardless of which, which bid we approve?
Yes, because as in any grant, you use the largest estimate you receive, and so you get the most money, and then we spend up to that amount, which is half of the amount of.
Okay, so if you went with the 25, we'd still get approximately 10 for community outreach, is that what you're saying?
No, it's, I, it's, it's the amount that we received in the estimate plus 5%, which is the overage I added, just in case the cost overruns that time.
Is there any time element with either one of them? I mean, one of them say, well, I can do it next week, you have it till I can't do it.
I don't know. No, the time element is just getting on their calendar. So they're both very busy companies, obviously.
Busy time of year.
And they both said that they could do it around August, at this point, if we were to approve.
Okay, so, forgive me.
Yeah, yeah.
If, if, hang on, if I'm clear, so just say we approve the lower estimate, okay? So that would give us 5% of that amount for the community outreach?
No, I'm sorry, the community outreach is a separate line. It's fixed. It's 2,600 or 27 whatever.
Okay, thank you.
It has nothing to do with the, this work.
So regardless of the 44 and change, whatever's not spent for the job and the outreach would go back. Go to a car, okay. And then I, you have a question, Bob?
Yeah, so with any.
Yes, Hannah, before you.
Oh, no, it's fine.
You change your name to Bob.
Yeah, go ahead. Sorry.
Don't forget that, you know, we contracted with Jake, $140,000 a year due to snow flalling, so it's not like we're.
Oh, right, yeah.
I understand that, we just gave both than 150 for holiday beach.
Yeah, so.
I'm not worried about who's getting money.
Pretty well on that.
They're all getting a budget.
Okay, Bob.
Rebecca!
Bob Northford Drive.
You're right.
So with any contractors, I would imagine there's room for negotiation. So with Wilson's contract, if there's language that you want in there to, you know, exact scope of the project, perhaps it's worth going to them and saying, you wanna make sure that this is on A to Z for this amount of money.
Well, yeah, this goes back to the, we don't have a contract template, so we need the contract template. My understanding is, the scope and sequence has been well communicated, so hopefully both of them are responding to that scope and sequence.
Okay. All right. Okay, so, is there any more discussion you wanna make?
I don't, I don't think so. I'm just, I'm sort of, I'm just, I'm just, I don't know, the way the whole thing is rolled out.
Yes, same here.
It's just not professional.
Yeah, we have to look going forward.
I'm not pulling on anybody, because it does seem like there is, it seems, you know, I think Wilson is, I've dealt with him, they're an awesome company, and JDI's an awesome company. We, you know, we wanna spend money both places so that they always work with us. It's just, it's tax money, and I, I think if you can get the same job, if it was my money, I know what I would do. So that's just, that's how I'm gonna vote. So, but I, I just completely understand everybody's opinion. But, so motion's been made, it's been seconded, so.
Actually, not been seconded yet.
Yeah, it's seconded.
You seconded the motion, so.
So we can discuss it.
Oh, sorry.
So, yeah.
I thought you were talking about that contract.
No, no, no.
So I can call a vote, that we can vote to award the bid to either.
Well, the motion was made to award to Wilson, so that's what we have to vote on.
All right, all right, thank you.
Yep, yep.
The motion was made to vote for Wilson, so.
Yeah, well, that needs to be seconded then, because nobody's seconded that.
We shouldn't.
Yeah, that's why we seconded, so we get a discussion.
I made the motion, you seconded it, so we can discuss it. Yeah, discuss it.
I thought you said, don't second it, so we can have discussion.
Okay, so.
Make it, yeah, like, you know.
So if I call a vote, that doesn't mean you have to vote yes and you're not.
Right, exactly. Vote no.
So, okay, now let's have, let's have a vote on that motion to award the bid to Wilson. So how do you vote?
Yes.
How do you vote? Unless you want me to vote first.
Yeah, that's fine. I'm gonna vote yes, because we talked to them first in this process that was not as it should have been. But I feel like we spoke with them first, and so just do that.
Okay, and I vote no, but the motion passes, so.
All right.
I'm with you, Steve.
It's, it's not, it's not gonna help being cheap, or not, I mean, it's, it's about, you know. Yeah, I totally get it, and after, you know, talking to Jake, like I said, I mean, I felt like he was more than capable of doing. Yeah.
All right, thank you. Yep, thank you. Okay, next item of old business is auditor view of the Owl's Head South Pomston Thompson Transfer Station. So we had a report submitted to us to review, and I don't see anybody here from the transfer station to speak to the auditor, so.
Yeah, I think we should invite him to the next meeting, so, because we have questions, so he can, you know, have him present it in language that we all, you know, can understand, we have questions.
It's a pretty big line.
I mean, right, I mean, we can review it, but, I mean, it's a done deal. It's a done deal, so it's just a matter of questions and, you know, concerns and whatever stuff. Had it done until July 7th, or whenever it is meeting.
Okay.
Would you like me to call?
Yes, please. So that would be.
July 7th.
Yep.
All right. Next item is possible appointments to the planning board at Owl's Head Airport Committee. And as I understand, we've had two people request to be on the planning board as an alternate. This is kind of alternate position, this is for all, this is for all. One of them is here in the audience today.
I actually sent a letter for the.
Yeah.
Oh, had I?
Yeah.
Okay.
After the last meeting, I referenced.
And John.
John is here, I thought there was.
I thought there was two of the planning board members.
Yeah.
All right, so that was misunderstanding by.
Yeah, you received anymore from the planning board?
It makes it easier, because I didn't know I'd have to choose some YouTube guys. That was a good point, but you get two people that, you know, dedicate some time to town. It's not, it's a raw deal, you can choose one. So, okay, so I think it's, I'll make the, since the planning boards first on the list, I'll make a motion to appoint John Jeffers as the alternate to the planning board, if I get that correct.
I'll second that.
Okay.
Yeah, well, since there's only one, if there was more than one, I was gonna suggest that we forward the names, resumes, or whatever to, to the planning board chair, because they're the one that has to work with whomever. But since there's only one, I guess we don't need to have them make a decision between the two, so.
Yeah, and I was gonna, if there was two, I was gonna ask, how often, do you attend planning board meetings, John?
How often?
Yeah, do you attend them?
No.
Okay, but you're gonna now, I guess, you know, this part, okay. I think that's important.
Yeah, and this, there's some coming up this year too. You know, just gonna look and see. Some more, I'm pretty sure, it is usually, you know. Twenty first and 33rd, Chief Animal Control.
Get the 2020, the list, you're looking at the list of.
Yeah, I was.
It's coming. Maybe it's.
Oh, boys and committed, yeah, planning board, 20, yeah, the others, well, she's moving up to, she's done anywhere, we're moving up, we still have to, she would, that's right, we still have to appoint her if she want. And then Maria is up also. So there'll be another opening after town meeting. If there's anybody out there that wants to step forward.
Okay, so.
Maria Besson, I don't know her name.
Okay, motion's been made, it's been seconded, to appoint John Jeffers to the planning board as an alternate. How do you vote, Linda?
Yes.
You vote yeah?
Yes.
I'll vote yes. Okay, and then the next committee would be Owl's Head Airport Committee. So that means we have two volunteers, I believe, I can't remember. Somebody else submitted a letter, and yourself, so I think it needs at least two members. So do you remember, John, you had the lady your wife recommended for the?
Yeah, she, she told me tonight that she has reached out to two people, and both of them said not at this time.
Okay.
Okay, so they were giving, we only have one, so.
All right, all right, well, I'll make the motion to appoint Greg McAlroy.
McAlroy.
Matthew to the Owl's Head Airport Committee.
Second it. Those terms are three years, on, so everybody knows it's three year term.
Big commitment.
Yeah, big commitment.
Okay. It's been made, motion made, seconded, how do you vote, Linda?
Yes.
How do you vote, Hannah?
Yes.
I'll vote yes. And have you, do you attend the Owl's Head Airport Committee?
I have not.
Load of fun.
I gotta hope I missed all the action from the rest up here.
Oh, and so is Action Man.
I had a lot of good experience on the, it seemed like that group was very willing to like discuss and work for a lot of, a lot of things. Very level-headed committee at that time. Okay, so moving on to new business. Owl's Head Cemetery Committee regarding burial plot at Ash Point and McHale Cemeteries, upcoming tree work at Ingram Cemetery, Thomas A. Stevens correspondence and update on fence at Miriam Cemetery. Thomas A. Stevens correspondence and update on fence at Miriam Cemetery. Well, that's a boatload.
Yeah.
Busy time again. Lee Carver, Chair of the Cemetery Committee. So I sent a letter to the Select Board asking for a decision regarding a request for the inurnment of cremains in a lot at Ash Point. As I pointed out before, first, we don't have a sexton. So this is not really something in the Cemetery Committee's wheelhouse to be making these decisions. The Cemetery Committee would very much like to help the family. However, there is no proof of ownership of that lot, which is not unusual problem sadly. Of the nearly 2,000 people buried here. There are very few deeds to the lots, especially the older lots, so, and we have no burial records whatsoever. So we don't truthfully have a specific recommendation to allow or disallow. We see both sides. Our concern is not having documentation that the family owns that lot. We don't, we're not saying there's anything shady going on, but we're worried about ramifications in the future. So we leave it to you to make the decision whether or not you would like to allow the inurnment.
Is, is someone already buried there with, with the headstone?
There is, so this is the Smith lot and the gentleman, a daughter, reached out to me. Her father passed away in 2016. His father and grandparents are buried in that lot. I don't, I don't know this woman. I have to assume that she's who she says she is. I don't have her identification or any of that.
Well, well, we wouldn't, but possession is non-criminal law, so that possessing.
Well, it's true, but again, keep in mind that we have no burial records and burial deeds. So I have a suspicion that you could throw a dart at almost any lot in Owl's Head and you couldn't prove who it belongs to, you can only go by the headstones.
Right, right, yeah, what else could you do?
Is she saying who they purchased it from or through?
She has no documentation.
Because I know, like, we bought six lots over at Ocean View in South Comston and we purchased them for the Burpee Carpenter, Hudson, Pierre Alpham.
I don't, so I don't believe the Burpee Carpenter, well, they may do it perhaps on behalf of the family, but I've never seen a deed with Burpee Carpenter on it. I mean, it's, it's a family, not Burpee Carpenter, and they, I think.
I have receipt though for ours through them, so.
I'm not aware of that ever happening in Owl's Head, but again, we have.
I mean, they, I guess I'm just saying they had a purchase of someone.
They did, so there was an Ash Point Cemetery Committee. The last person to be buried in that lot was, I think, in 1960 something, so it's been a long time.
So when were these people that are there now buried there?
Well, as I say, the, the last person, the father of the gentleman's, who, whose cremains may go in there. His father passed away in 1964, 68. I don't remember off the top of my head.
Okay, and that's the one that supposedly, well, the headstone was there in there.
Yes, there are three, I'm, I'm confident there are three people buried there.
Yeah.
Their headstones.
And we know how many lots go with that.
In the Ash Point Cemetery, every single lot is a different site.
Yeah.
Completely unhelpful. Yeah, it is clutter. So we can see our frustration. Again, we want to help the family, but.
Right.
Is there like technically a problem? For a burial?
Technically, I think there is room. And again, this is where we would rely on Joe Baum or Ben Pratt, you know, to do their probing or, you know, Joe's got a, a great memory. I'm not sure he's going to remember or he was even working in 1960, whatever, doing this.
No.
But they do probe, but this would be cremains. So cremains with a vault only take up, you know, like a foot square or something like that. So I'm pretty confident that there is space, you know, perhaps on the periphery, but in that lot. But it is unusual that I don't find any indication of ownership at all of that lot.
Well, we were at South Comston when that, not in the 60s, obviously, when the whole thing was established.
It's true, but there, there are more deeds to lots in Owl's Head than in, in the Ash Point Cemetery rather than anywhere else. Which isn't to say it's comprehensive, but, so in any case, we're applying a lot of that, is, is really what I'm saying, you know.
I, I would tend to, to allow it, but it's not, you know, if the grave stones, that who's going, you know, who's going to challenge it? I mean.
I don't think anybody would challenge it. Again, it's just trying to treat everybody fairly. So imagining something down the road where somebody wants to be buried in another lot where they don't have proof of ownership, which again is not surprising.
Right.
Then we're going to have to allow that too, I think.
Right, they can prove that that's a relative, you know, they have, that would be the one thing. Anybody could do, but if they're a relative.
So what then, do we become, you know, the graveyard police? I mean, you say we have to prove, well, how do we prove?
No, they, they, you know, you know, I don't know, you, with letters, you know.
We allow the record, that's what I'm saying.
Probably someone, it's, it's bad child or whatever.
Right. So, so would you, you're asking for an obituary or something or a death certificate that lists them as?
If you have a death, death certificate, you know, that would seem to, I mean, it's not the ownership, the proof, close relation.
It does.
Yes, so we're questioning from the audience, go ahead.
I wanted to mention, one of the problems that could arise is if you have multiple people in the family who want to be buried in the site. And this is one thing that Lee has kind of been working on is would you, how do you determine who gets to go in there if there's only room for one? See what I mean? Nevertheless, so if this is, goes along with this thing about proof of ownership and it's.
Right.
It, it just gets very complicated and the idea is for, to have some process where it, that kind of, you know, is the same way down the line.
Right.
It seems to be almost impossible, because you don't have enough information, so.
Well, I could limit it to X amount of additional people in the lot that's already.
Yeah, but who do you, how do you determine which person goes in?
I'm a first.
The senior.
Well, no, if you limit it, you limit it to two more people, then, you know, unless they die the same day, unless three die the same day, you know.
All right, I have a grandchild here, the grandfather here, but the grandchild dies first, he goes in and the other guy doesn't.
No.
I mean, it's very complicated.
Well, let's pause, of course it is, but the other thing is to just ignore it and let them just say, well.
I mean, I, I truly don't foresee any issues, but again, this is not something that really is the responsibility of the Cemetery Committee. It's not for their reason for being so.
No, we should set up some rules along there. You can't cover for every scenario that's going to happen, you know, just can't. But there should be some basic, you know, rules pertaining to something like that.
I think what Lee's saying is it's actually not their job.
No, I know.
To decide, yeah.
No, what I'm saying is we should, we should make up some, some rules regarding that.
The, the one thing that I, I did do, when we had an issue with another lot in there, the Willis lot, which the, the Willis family is a huge family, enormous family.
Right.
And there were already nine people in that lot. It's a larger lot than the Smith lot that we're discussing here. And that immediately concerned me, exactly what Dick is saying, thinking, oh my gosh, you know, there were 13 in one generation and 13 in another generation. If we allow this person, are, are there going to be 12 other people that want to be buried there? And they're going to say, well, how'd you let, you know, Bill go in there when I want to go in there? So what I did come up with, and I'm, I'm not kidding myself that it's legally binding, but it was literally an affidavit, a simple affidavit from the eldest child, the eldest heir that is alive, saying that they had no desire to be buried there and that it was fine for Bill to go there. So at least we have some record that is filed in, safe in the cemetery stuff. So we can come back to that. If, if somebody else in the Willis family comes along, Bill would have been next in line, so he definitely should go there. But again, we were just uncomfortable with imagining the future in a huge family. We don't want to be stuck in a firestorm, who gets to go there? I don't think it's going to be a problem, but it's a little uncomfortable.
You had mentioned a couple times a sexton, now, well, how does that play into all this?
So. That's a very good question. I have it on my list of many things to do to speak with the very knowledgeable sexton in Warren. Your name is Amanda Schelmert. I have spoken with the superintendent at Acorn Cemetery and Penny South Comston, Penny.
Ally.
Thank you. Senior moment.
Yeah.
And my impression from both of them is that they really do bend over backwards to try and accommodate families, which I appreciate, but they are superintendents for sextons. They're not cemetery committees. So therein is the difference. So a sexton makes these decisions. They're a paid person. I'm assuming they're covered under town insurance. If somebody comes back and, you know, wants to sue the town or the sexton, we are a volunteer committee. I mean, we are appointed, but I think therein lies the difference. And trying to figure this stuff out honestly is, is quite time consuming as well, to try and figure out if there are deeds and all of that. And that, it's not that we can't do it, but that's what a sexton really is afraid of, so. In an ideal world, we would have a sexton. I think it would take a huge, not huge, it would take a burden off the women in the town office who are selling the lots, you know, the sexton would literally show folks around in the Owl's Head Cemetery and say, you know, these are your choices. They would answer the questions, how many cremains or full body burials can you get in there? So, but in any case, sorry, this is getting me for long, because it's, it's a great discussion about sextons, but that wasn't my intention, so.
Okay, so as far as the cremains and the burial plot at Ash Point, what are, what are you asking for?
Whether or not the Select Board would like to allow or disallow the inurnment of the cremains for Mr. Smith, the Smith lot.
And they, have you had, I know he said, have they had, you've had a discussion that they said they have, this is a relative and they, they've said that this is a relative.
I do not have a death certificate, so I haven't gone for the proof, but it's the, the daughter of the gentleman whose cremains could potentially go in Ash Point. So if, if you were to vote in favor of him going there, then I would certainly suggest a request. At the very least, a death certificate to prove that he is related to who's in this.
Right.
Okay, so, you know, I'd be willing, I'll make a motion that if they bring forth the death certificate, then to, you know, that, you know, approve the burial or where, where is this particular one? Because it sounds like it's going to be a case by case if you're going to come forward with these, so, okay, so. But there's two of people here, just, so I made that motion.
I'll second it.
Okay, so is there any further discussion on this or anything that you'd like to bring up?
I mean, I would be in favor. It doesn't seem to me as the person's already cremated that we're on the time crunch.
No, no, she was.
So I would prefer to look into the legality of it because of the precedent setting nature of what we're about to do. That's me, so.
So, uh, does that mean that the Select Board is going to be in touch with an attorney or?
Yeah, we should talk to Paul about that, because he's done a lot of cemetery work before and just run it by him and, and see. But, you know, I think they should be able to, somewhere along the line, there's got to be something, you know.
Yeah, and I, I just think, yeah, this is a good opportunity to like figure out, all right, how are we going to do this?
Right, and I don't know who, I think most people, that probably were, because the Ash Point Cemetery years ago was separate from the town. It was the Ash Point Cemetery Committee. They're probably all buried somewhere now, because I don't think, because, you know, everybody's on that committee, probably.
Right, Al McNeil.
Yeah, there, you know, there was Al, I don't know if Kate Doyle was on that committee or not, but there was a bunch.
I think they, I think she had resigned from.
Well, I mean, they might have some information, if there is anybody, you know, that's left, there's, there's got to be something somewhere, you know.
A, a lot of records were turned over to the town when the Ash Point Cemetery Committee dissolved. And I have looked through those records and there's nothing that I see that is helpful as far as ownership or exact burial.
Right, right, because they were, you know, it was a total separate entity from the town and, you know, governed by the, the Cemetery Committee. We always had to raise money for it, because there was never enough in the perpetual care fund to take care of it. But it was all, now it won't, and it was always separate. It was always separate from the other, other cemeteries. And then when the whole thing you saw got off, you know, it came into one, so. Something somewhere, I think Dick probably was around. We were going around, around with that.
Ash Point Cemetery was cemetery, town cemetery, the town of Comston.
Right.
And then South Comston.
When we were East Comston or whatever.
And then, and then Owl's Head.
Yeah.
And it's, we went, look at Eaton's history, it talks about it being the town cemetery. And then there was some, uh, strong contingent of people in Ash Point that really did a lot of work down there and so forth. And, but it was a town cemetery all along.
Yeah, it was, but they governed it and the money was kept separate from the other cemeteries.
Yeah, well, I don't want to get into any more of it.
Right, right, yeah, yeah.
So I have another question, but it's, we're, question separate from this vote, so I'll ask you after we vote. So is there any more discussion? Because we made a motion, Linda, seconded to allow this particular burial to take place. So we can take a vote and not allow it, or we can take a vote to allow this particular one, so how do you vote?
Yes.
How do you vote, Hannah?
Yeah.
Okay, I'm going to vote yes. Uh, I think it's very important to get it cleaned up from here on out, but I just, I don't want to stop a family burial and if that means that we're going to have to people trying to get one lot, then it's probably, that could be a problem. But, and I know death brings up the worst in people sometimes, the worst in people, so this could come back upon me, but still.
So to be clear, I, if you can provide the death certificate, then you're willing to proceed with
This particular one.
This inurnment, but you also are simultaneously or at some point going to speak with Paul Harrell?
Right.
Okay. Just want to make sure I understand.
Yes, I'm sure other camps will, because this is a.
They do.
Yeah, I mean, and it's, you know, it's old, 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 old camps in this domain, so I'm sure that, you know, what do they do? I'm curious, it's what they do. I'm sure they've got a run into it.
Yeah.
Let's see some ground rules, you know, what's the process of crossing having a sexton, because I assume it's an individual.
It, it varies widely. That's, we looked into it in the past, but it was several years ago. Bill did some, some more looking into that, so I don't think the numbers are accurate anymore. But you could hire somebody on a per hour basis or a per month basis or an annual. So, and, and that's St. George, I think, they spend, I think, $6,000 a year. They don't, just about as many, they've only got one, one cemetery, it's going to be two, but about as many burials as we do. So, uh, then in Rockland, of course, they have a superintendent instead of a sexton. And I don't know why you may, but I suspect it's a significant amount of money. I would hope it's a lot of work for those cemeteries in Rockland. Penny Alley, I think, does it as a volunteer.
Is there a scenario where the cost of getting the lot, because I, I don't remember, we sell the lots, we lease them, and we don't lease them?
Yeah.
We, we sell them, so is it the case that sale the lot will pay for the sexton? Because, I mean, we don't need to be making money off selling.
No, if you don't have money, we're going to sell each year.
Right, we don't sell very many. And, yeah, there are reasons for that as well, but we don't sell very many lots. We might sell more if we had a sexton, but again, then you're paying sextons, so. The, the truth is that, to my understanding, owning a cemetery is never going to be a money maker.
No, no, of course it's not, it shouldn't be.
And, and nor can you even hope to break even, so. But having a sexton part time, I think would make a lot sense.
So what, would you be willing to like look into that and see if it's available? I think it's a great idea, especially if you have lots that were sold, so.
My hope would be that one of the local sextons who's, who's being paid, and nothing against Penny, but I know she doesn't want to take on anymore. Might, you know, might, you know, want to do it for us part time, because they're already trained, they know what they're doing, so.
That would make no sense.
Right, so we'll definitely do. So, is that enough?
For that particular.
Any other questions?
Okay, we have, we have a couple more.
Yes, yes, sorry, I will try and see what's up. Um, I'm not sure what order they're in.
Make fail.
Make fail, okay, so we. McVale, okay, so we did have an issue at McVale recently. I believe it's been resolved several years ago, 2023. The cemetery committee was approached about moving a, two lot markers for Collins Lot way down next to the Puppiello's fence, to the right, to the left, rather, six feet. We understood from Mr. Collins that there had been a mistake. Somehow those lot markers had been moved at some point. And there was a lot of work that had been done in the McVale Cemetery and trees were taken down. So we thought we were correcting an issue when we asked the select board to approve moving the markers six feet. So that was 2023. Last October, Heather Almquist, who's on the cemetery committee, and I were digging around to the left of the Collins Lot, and we found a headstone for the Bennett family, which was now inside the parameters of the Collins Lot. Not good. So I immediately wrote to Mr. Collins and said, seems like there's a mistake here. And he voluntarily agreed to move markers back where they were. He did it himself and it happened right away, so good for him. He was unhappy recently when his aunt was buried in the correct portion of the Collins Lot at McVale because the cemetery hadn't been moved. And so that seemed to upset him, and he was bringing up the issue that in 2023, after we had allowed him to move the markers, he had paid $2,000 to have stump grinding done in the now expanded Collins Lot. And he's asking to be reimbursed now for those $2,000 because it's not the Collins Lot. So the cemetery committee does not have an issue with reimbursing him his work that should have been done. We think he was overcharged, and he has yet to produce a receipt. He didn't get it. So we have told him he must give us an itemized invoice if he wants to be reimbursed. So I'm not expecting you to make a, to do anything. I just wanted to let you know that that was going on.
No, we'll deal with that when.
Yeah, so again, this is one of those situations where in good faith, we tried to help the family out, tried to correct what we thought was a misunderstanding or a moving of the markers. And I think he's understanding and is appreciative about work, but he was unhappy there for a while, so. Um, next on your order, I'll look at the correspondence. Oh, yes, well, we'll get that out of the way too, so.
That's not the tree.
Tree work.
The tree work.
Tree work at Ingraham, right, that's, that's up and coming. We have a budget that I believe of $1,500 annually, use it or lose it. And there are a couple of trees that do need to come down into Ingraham Cemetery. One, right smack dab in the middle, old crappy apple tree that's leaning. So that will be done. Benners Tree Service is going to do that, and that will be done very soon. So that's all good, being proactive there. And then Ms. Thomas Stevens, next on your order. So I, as I mentioned a while ago, I'm on the Maine State Cemetery Preservation Commission, and one of the issues that we've been discussing is best methods for cleaning gray stones, making sure that we're all on the same page in the commission, which is a very varied group, and all on the same page as to what we're going to recommend for proper methods. There are several companies in the state of Maine that use methods that are not recommended by the Maine Old Cemetery Association nor the Veterans Administration. And Thomas A. Stevens appears to be one of those. So as I was just doing a Google search, I came across them recently, and I saw that they had listed the Town of Owlshead slash Nancy Colson under the listing of all of the towns they've done work in. And if you look at the website, it appears as though by being listed there, the Town of Owlshead and Nancy Colson are satisfied customers and that we're recommending this company. And the cemetery committee and I, Normoka, recommend this company based on their very clear methods of using pressure washers and acids. So we don't want to disparage this company. We would simply like them to remove any association with the Town of Owlshead. So I drafted a letter for you folks to sign if you're in agreement or happy to make edits, but any work that he did in the Hall Cemetery was in 1997, and that has had a tremendous makeover and overhaul in 2018. So any work that he did is long since been overdone, you know, overwritten, over cleaned, whatever, so.
So I'm wondering if I could propose a different solution, where maybe our town administrator sends a little email in addition to what you've done. I feel like it's a little bit overkill for the select board to weigh in at this point because we did, I mean, your initial correspondence with him made it sound like he had never worked here. So I think that's what got him a little bit worked up.
I think you're right, although he was very accusatory. I, he, he said I was accusing him of something and I didn't, I, I.
Well, you did sort of say that you didn't see that he had ever worked in the town. And so he was, he was reacting to that, I think. And he did overreact.
Yes.
But I don't, I guess I'm wondering if just a lower level, not lower level.
No, you're right.
I'm sorry.
It's a next collection.
I'm, I'm on.
Is that a solution?
I'm, I'm, all right, I'm on record, on video saying that I don't mean that at all. I'm, I'm just wondering if maybe Rodney talking to him first or emailing first might be a good idea. And then if, if, I agree with you because your greater point is definitely true. Like if somebody comes to the cemetery, anything he did in 1997 is, you know, it's not what they're looking at, so. Yes, exactly.
It's likely false advertising for him to have that.
The point that, yeah, I, I think really possibly causes, no, the cemetery, I was not on the cemetery committee at that point.
Right, right.
But I know my husband and cemetery committee at the time, and Joe Farinini spent days and days and days slaving in that cemetery. And I'll be darned if anybody gets credit for that except the people that were in the cemetery doing this complete overhaul.
Sure, the, the thing is, it was done, and she was the chairman, and then it was done. So what he put out there isn't false. It just should be updated somehow because that is what happened.
Well, that's what I'm saying, is if, if Rodney can just shoot him an email and say, look, you know, we acknowledge you did work in 1997, however, you should take the.
We have no record of.
You should take the recommendations, well, somebody certified it.
We don't know if he fixed the point stone, we don't know what he did. There, I have found absolutely no record in any files in there. So I'm not saying he wasn't there.
Right.
But again, I, I don't think what he did was extensive.
No, it probably wasn't, but, and once he put false information up there, I don't think we can tell him that he has to take down that stuff on his website.
Well, I, I leave it to you.
Yeah, yeah, I think have a conversation with him or whatever and explain the situation and see, see where it goes, but just say, all right, which, you know, we're going to sue you if you don't take this off.
No, I didn't say that. I wasn't suggesting that. I was just hoping that he would do the right thing.
Sure.
Yeah, but that's his website, and he's going to like to put that on there because it did happen.
Yes, 30 years ago.
I know.
So anyway, whatever you guys decide.
Well, 30 years from now, we'll have your name on it.
On a air show?
I don't know.
Okay, no, we'll make a motion. Maybe it's that.
Sure.
So I'd like to make a motion that Rodney sends an email just basically communicating that, you know, we recognize he did work in 1997, but extensive work has been done seven years ago, and so it no longer reflects his work, and we would just like to be taken off. That's my motion.
See what happens, I'll second that.
Yeah.
Just see where it goes from there, so getting into a key contest.
Acknowledge your request, but, but not.
Right.
Okay, yeah, so if motion's been made, I'll second it. How do you vote?
Yes.
I'll vote yes. More work for Rodney.
Yeah. Okay, so on to the happier stuff. Uh, fence and miremen, I'm sorry if I'm out of order, but I'll just go through this.
You're, no, you're on.
No, I said, um, Dick and I in particular, and Walter Guptill also on the cemetery committee. We were not certain we were ever going to be able to get fence posts in, even though we do feel strongly there needs to be a fence there. I see tire marks in the snow that get very dangerously close to those stones. So Plan B now is that we're going to get seven granite stones, long rectangular granite stones to put there. They're not terribly high, but they will definitely bar any vehicles going in there. So we asked four companies for bids, who never got back to us. Jake Barber did, and Mecklen got to us, and we chose Mecklen because they were $1,000 less expensive. So we'll be spending a little bit more for the granite stones than we had budgeted for a wooden fence, but the great thing, of course, about granite is we'll never have to paint it.
It's forever.
That's right, should be there long after we're gone, so. We'll be spending $2,500 total on that. So let's see, Frank Ross is going to make us some small cemetery signs, literally signs that say cemetery even smaller than a road sign to go on, signs to show people where to go. For instance, Noel Road, which is where the Rose Hill Cemetery is. So there will be a cemetery sign with a little arrow on it there. There'll be one on Evergreen Lane across from the general store for the Evergreen Cemetery pointing in there. And then we'll also ask them to put a small one, there's a fork in the road, there's a home. You go back to the Evergreen Cemetery, there's a home straight ahead. And the cemetery road curves to the right, so we will put a small sign just pointing that way so people don't drive into the home. And last but not least, we would like to go on at Pointing to Begin Cemetery again. In the town's right of way. And then ask Frank to put the Begin Cemetery sign that says, you know, established whatever year it was, in the cemetery. The same sign that was yanked out of the property that. That's in question. Yes, yes, but they, Marcus, Mr. Marcus pointed out that not all of the cemeteries had signage pointing where they were. So by putting these small cemetery signs on the street signs indicating that if you can't see the cemetery, indicating where to go. So we're getting all of that done at the same time. So I'm hopeful that that will work for Mr. Marcus.
So has he, has he said whether or not that?
I haven't been in touch with him yet because I have no idea what Frank's schedule is. But Mr. Marcus himself took this cemetery sign and plumped it in the cemetery itself. So I'm kind of assuming that he would be okay with that. I suspect what he may not be okay with is the very small sign on midpoint that's pointing to the cemetery. But we're trying to, you know, help out folks who are looking for the cemetery for their, for their heirs, so. The green burial presentation we had was very well received and very well attended. We had at least 20 folks here. I heard back from six who were extremely in favor of the idea of green burials in Owl's Head. So that's something that the cemetery committee will be looking into. Our options are to have hybrid burials, meaning that you could have a green burial in the Owl's Head Cemetery, the new airport cemetery, in the full burial section. So you might have somebody in a vault in a traditional burial, but you could conceivably have somebody green buried right next to them if the person so desires. If we were to allow green burials in Owl's Head, we would need an amendment to our cemetery ordinance because we do require a vault for all full burials. Full burials traditionally, of course, are embalmed and highly toxic, green burials are not. But that was the point of requiring a vault in the cemetery ordinance was to keep pollutants from getting into the water table. But in any case, that's something for the future. I just wanted to let you know that we've gotten only a piece of positive feedback for green burials. And it's possible we could have a separate green burial area perhaps at the Owl's Head Cemetery. I think there's enough space. Needs to be fairly dry, though, and that's a bit of a wet cemetery. And we would also need to contact Paul Harrell to see if the land that the town was given for expanding the Ingraham Cemetery a number of years ago could be used for a green burial site. But that's something we're working on this fall or this winter, but just so you're aware. And last but not least, the cemetery committee wanted to make sure that the Miremen Cemetery was looking lovely because this year is the bicentennial of the Owl's Head life, September 10th, 2025. So the American Lighthouse Foundation and the Muswell Ridge Historical Society are going to be coordinating something, I think something fairly low-key, but something. And the cemetery committee will be involved to an extent because of the cemetery nearby and the six lake keepers that are buried in town. I just wanted to let you know about that.
Just have a, oh, go ahead.
No, no, I'm a little tanky.
Oh, okay, a, a question, how, what's the cemetery committees involved with in people that are buried on their own land? What do you?
We're not involved, but, I mean, they may come to us and ask what the process is, and then we have to, I think, recommend that they see an attorney. But my understanding is that they do have to notify the town.
Right, yeah, that was my question.
As a, as a, a private cemetery, I think it needs to be a quarter of an acre, if I remember correctly, and has to meet certain guidelines. But again, sexton.
Yeah, yeah, well, I was just wondering with the town, because there, there is one. You know, wherever there is, well, there's two people there now.
And, and I will say, the discussion about green burials, I think, got people thinking more about being buried in their own property. So you probably have more questions about it in the future. It's not really a guessing, it's just.
No, no, that's right.
That is?
Great, thank you.
You're very welcome.
A lot of work. Okay, next item in your business is fossil action on the carrying license for Owl's Head Transportation Museum Event. So do you have a license on it?
Uh, yes, so I, you all have copies, and then I have the original here if you could just sign.
Signature.
The application looks a little different because the state.
Yeah, they've changed their.
The state's changed its application process.
Yeah, well, here's the original. Yeah, they usually, it comes to us and then goes to the state, but it seems like it's.
Yeah, they changed the process and the look of the.
Yeah.
Okay, so, so you're saying the process is changed, so that now the state approves, and then we get final approval, is that what we're understanding it for the?
I believe, I believe so, yes. So they kind of fill it, they fill it out online and everything, everything's done online now.
Yeah, they changed it all around, so as long as, you know, there's included.
Right.
On the copy, there's no place to sign anything, but there is on that one. It's included the signature page. Yeah, it came to us, and we gave it to whoever applied, and they sent it to the state.
Exactly, yeah, now it's kind of opposite, yeah.
I'll make the motion that we sign the, uh, approve the carrying license for Owl's Head Transportation Museum Event. Was it what date?
The June 27th.
27th, yeah.
June 27th, 25.
I'll second that.
Any further discussion on it?
Licensee Maine kebab. You sp- kebab. Suppose it's going to be kebabs? Like kebab?
I would assume so.
Kebab or two, I guess.
Kebab.
How do you vote on that?
Yes.
How do you vote, Pam?
Yes.
And I vote yes.
Right. Thank you. Get that right to the museum.
Yeah.
Okay. So now we're going to add, we have, I guess I'll make a motion to add the scene and salt. Or is it just?
Yeah, we already made a motion.
Yeah, we made a motion to add it under new business.
We already did that.
All right. So it's been added to new business. We'll just take it off now. So, and do we all have a copy of this?
Yes.
Yeah.
Have not read it. Do you want to add on it?
Yeah, well, each, you know, each, each year we collaborate with the other counties and, and whatever and go out.
So every year that the, the towns join together through the county and then the county sees, goes and puts out their bids for salt and sand. This is just the salt part of it. But they kind of get the best price for, for the towns because of the volume. Last year it was $73 and this year it went down, $71.40.
I wonder why they charge more towns or why they charge different rates per.
It kind of goes by the cubic yard a little bit.
Oh, I know. But why is it like more cubic yard for living more falls than in this Owlshead?
Well, there's two, there's two different avenues you can take. So the, like, we have JBI go and get it.
Right, right.
There's, the towns that may have a higher price, they're having it delivered.
Right.
So that's where that price difference comes from.
Or we, if they use small. When you buy a thousand or 15, they will lower the price.
Right.
Yeah.
Owlshead is $71.40 for 500, but living more falls is $81.40. It's 10 bucks.
Well, that's because they probably get it delivered.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, the ones in the 80s, they put 15,000.
Yeah.
Well, like you can see Ellsworth is 66.40, but they, they kick almost 3,000 tons of the lawn. Yeah, $71.40 is not too bad.
All right. I'll make a motion that we go with the county and the bid that comes out to 71.5 per ton for Owlshead upcoming year.
I'll second that.
Okay. Any further discussion on it?
No.
Okay. How do you vote, Linda?
Yes.
How do you vote, Pam?
Yes.
And I'll vote yes. Okay. Do you have some questions to sign?
Oh, sorry. Yes, I do. All right. That's that. Actually, I do not. I just think, I just need to let Tammy know that you, at town meeting, at the select board meeting, voted to approve it.
If they need minutes.
And then I can give them that.
Yeah.
Okay. Any other businesses that are on the board today? Seeing none, we will approve and sign the new report.
Should be on the last page of Owlshead.
Last one. Yeah, so. Oh, it is down in the corner.
Wrong. Looks like a whole separate page. Oh, well.
So how's it work with the cemetery association? We, we approve or they, you know, have an expense with.
Yeah, well, we, yeah, we. I'm just looking at it. We approved X amount of dollars, but that also includes caring, mowing and all that stuff too.
Yeah, they've already got the granite blocks in that one.
Right, yeah. I mean, we, we, expense of $25,600. I don't know what the breakout is of that. Let me see. Compost. How do you turn it on here? Oh, okay. It's just work on the compost. It looked like you were getting it out. Yeah. Yeah, yeah. See granite blocks on this. On this one. That room being rental, rented a lot until the refunds were given for the deposit. Wow.
Wedding reception or wedding party.
Yeah, you get one, two.
Baby showers.
Five, six, three, four. Yeah, Rodney's working on what we're going to do with the sewer, you know, and it's paid off, which will be September. You know, the only thing we won't have is the monthly payment. It's not that much. It's not going to amount to a lot with individual people. And you still have to pay, you know, that betterment fee, which is to put money aside for. Gas and stuff like that. And that's a.
Very important.
These probably won't change much at all.
I'll make a motion that we prove the warrants as we sign them. How do you vote, Linda?
Yes.
Vote yes. I vote yes. Make a motion if you're in the meeting.
Second.
How do you vote, Pam?
Get up and leave. Yeah, get up and leave. All right. One out.
They went out this morning.
It did, yeah. But it didn't stay very long.
Pretty.
Rodney wasn't a staff. He go out like.